Call to order and roll call, please.
Chair Fredrickson?
Here.
Vice Chair Shores?
Here.
Commissioner DeVries?
Here.
Commissioner Goss is not here, Commissioner Hunsicker is excused, Commissioner Case excused, and Commissioner McCoy?
Here.
We've got a quorum.
Everybody, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
(all in unison) I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and just with liberty and justice.
Thank you. All right, approval of minutes. Approval of regular meeting minutes on November 13th, 2018.
They're not there. I didn't hear.
It's okay.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Now we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. They're about there, please. Okay, thank you.
All right, item number two, consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time pursuant to ARS 38-431. Let me make one comment before we start here. There was an error in the paper this morning about that we will be discussing item B on the rezoning case at this time. If you guys have any comments you would like to make, you can come up at this time and please make your comments, but there won't be any discussion following this matter. So if anybody would like to at this time?
This is about the rezoning out by Slaughterhouse.
Could you please state your name, sir?
My name is Barry Nelson.
Barry Nelson.
And my address is 2112 Horsement Avenue, that area. The concern we have, and quite a few other people out there, is basically traffic. If there's 47 more homes going in out there, there's probably 90 more vehicles going out every day. Mission Boulevard is not finished through there. There's a block of this dirt, and there's no traffic control at the intersection of Wallapie and Jackson, which is kind of a bad intersection for coming out of that area. So we would hope that Mission Boulevard would be completed through that area and that they'd put a traffic light in at the intersection of Wallapie and Jackson.
Fair enough, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody further like to make any comment at this time?
Hello, everybody. My name is Thomas Ashley, I live at 2131 Horsement Avenue, and as well as this gentleman, I'm very concerned about the, probably the very much traffic that's going to be coming into the area in this building project without traffic control at the quick stop area and a left-hand turn signal. We have a lot of children in that area at the time, and I'm sure we're going to have a lot more as time goes on. We need to have traffic control, and I'm very concerned about that. The crime rate in our area in particular, right now, has grown. I've only lived here for about 14 months now. Crime has progressed, and I'm concerned more about the crime coming into that area than anything else. And so I wish you would consider that. The third subject is, when we bought our house on Horsement Avenue, it was a, more of a, more of a house that had a scene of all the mountains. If these houses are built, it's going to block our scenery from all the mountains. Then we have no view. The view is gone. All we're going to see is rooftops. So I'm very concerned about that for the property value. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to make a comment at this time?
Hi, I'm Susan Joy, and I lived at 2131 Horsement, and, I mean, I own the same home. When we purchased our home, the view, well, we lost our front view already, I mean, but that's, that's within the development. But we, I think, paid more of a premium price for our home due to the view of the buttes out of our backyard, which is phenomenal. And I don't know if these are going to all be one-story houses, or if they're going to be two. I presume they're one. If they're two, everything's gone. Hopefully, they are one, but we will lose, you know, some value in our home with the view. I don't know if they're proposing to run gas lines in this new development. We currently are pure electricity, so if they have gas lines and then all of a sudden all we, they're available to us, it's going to be another expenditure to us. I don't know if that will devalue our homes, where, you know, hey, they've got gas here and not there. My daughter goes to high school, and I do have a concern. She, last year, she was the only one that caught the bus, and is behind us on Mission and Slaughterhouse Canyon Road. She stands out there in the dark by herself. So, I mean, we need a light there for safety reasons. As far as Tommy was saying about crime, yes. The crime has really, we've been hit, our neighbors have been hit. I don't know what the deal is, because we're in cul-de-sacs, but we've had some issues with that. Of course, more population, more crime. But I see that the zoning, from, to my knowledge, the square footage, they're trying to condense the square footage of the lots where they're a little bit smaller. So personally, I don't know if that's going to devalue our homes, but hopefully not. As far as the light that we, even if the homes weren't developed, the light at Jackson and Wallapie Mountain Road, right there by the quick stop, that's getting to be pretty dangerous. And in the summer now, the way the trees are landscaped to the, let's, if you go to, I'm trying to think directions. So if you turn left going towards Stockton Hill Road, right there, the trees that are landscaped, they're coming down so far that we're getting a blind spot, and those people are just rushing up, you know, up the Wallapie. So it's quite dangerous, and a lot of people early in the morning are going to work, and we're pretty congested. So regardless of what happens, it would, just a suggestion, I think we should maybe look at that issue of possibly having a light for safety reasons. And if all those houses go in, definitely. But that's about all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to?
Good evening. My name is Wayne McDonald. I have a house on Rincon in the Granite Bluff subdivision, which is, I think it's the other side of the desert area that we're talking about, that these people are talking about. As far as the view goes, we have a spectacular view out our backyard, but if they build houses back there, that's going to go, and I'm sure that they are going to build houses someday. My biggest problem is with the kind of houses that they're talking about. They're, they're talking, you know, from 150,000 to whatever, I don't know, single, well, houses that are of variable values. And my real estate, realtor friends tell me that the price on houses is set pretty much by the value of the houses surrounding it. I've paid attention to that, and that seems to be true in, in my subdivision. Also, this, this notification, I'm really upset about it. I drive in and out of there every day. I never saw this white sign with the big red word zoning on the top of it. I did some driving around today, thinking that, well, the signs are going to still be out there in the desert. Well, you know, because nobody takes the signs down. They put them up, but they don't take them down. Well, they took them down. I have a picture of one of those signs that was in the paper, and it has that new tower that they put up. I don't know what it is, I guess it's a radio tower or something, but it has that tower. And if you look at the angles with that tower in there, the sign was put on the opposite side, on the Slaughterhouse Road side of that property. We in Granite Bluff subdivision would never see it. We never go over there. So anyway, I think this needs a little bit more thought. I don't know why there's not more people here. We fought this battle, we've fought this battle three times now. Getting tired of it. Most of us moved in there, you know, this is where we're going to die, is right here. So...
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to make a comment at this time?
I've got one more thing, if I may. Barry Nelson. That area has just a few inches of topsoil on it, and the rest of it is rock. And if they start putting in underground utilities, foundations and whatnot, it seemed to me there'd be, have to be a lot of blasting out there. I don't know if you can do it without blasting, and for 47 units, we're going to listen to an awful lot of noise for a long time. You could make a restriction on how they handle that, too, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name.
My name is Verlinsen Allen, I live at 2228 Rincon Drive, and I would echo all the statements that have been made by all the other people. Certainly, we didn't know about it, and we have been pretty cognizant of zoning signs like Mac said. This is going to be our fourth time that we've fought this battle. And we're not as concerned about the growth as the growth that's, you know, there's so many places already zoned R1-6 that people could put their houses. The people that bought that property knew what it was zoned, and now they want to come in. And, you know, when we bought our property, we lived in a different part of town, and we're tired of the traffic, and we're tired of the R1-6 property, and we were very diligent in doing our research and finding out exactly where we wanted to live, and the access in and out of the area. And we were specific in looking for one access in and out of the area just because of the crime rate. You know, you've got multiple ways to escape, and, and a lot more people commit burglaries or whatever. We're very concerned about our property rates. Like I say, when we bought this property, we did our due diligence in looking at all the property around us, everything that was zoned, made sure exactly what this house would be so that we could live there the rest of our life. And we don't want to live by apartments, and as soon as somebody comes in with R1-6, we're going to be fighting the apartment, fight yet again. And, you know, this property behind us has already been, it used to be open, part of it, and now we want to go clear to R1-6, and we're very opposed to this. My understanding is that arguments and discussion will be on January 8th, and certainly we would like to be notified of that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else would like?
Come on.
I'd just like to say, you know, we moved here from Lake Havasu about, about 14 months ago, and it, this is a beautiful, a beautiful city to live in. We love it very much. But in the area where we live, it was best suited for us because of the BLM land behind us, we could go and get out in the open and have the freedom, freedom of riding our off-road vehicles out there and so on and so on. It's beautiful, beautiful property out there. Although, between Slaughterhouse Road and Lake Mission, back in that area, it's a dumping ground. Everybody dumps their trash, their tires, their mattresses, everything out there, and nothing being done to pick any of that up. So I don't understand why the city of Kingman isn't patrolling that area more often to catch these people that are dumping all of their trash in that area where they're planning this housing development. I really don't understand that. There, I don't see any patrol officers out there patrolling that. I've been out there almost every day on that property on my off-road vehicle. There's no BLM managers, there's no police officers, nobody, and trash is accumulating. So what are we going to do with that before we build new houses? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to make a comment at this time? All right, I see none. All right, closed. Sorry for the, for the misunderstanding. Sorry the paper got this wrong. We allowed you guys, because everybody here came expecting to, we were going to discuss this tonight, so we opened the opportunity of allowing you guys to make your piece tonight. And I believe this will be on the agenda, I believe, on the January meeting, so it will be posted, you guys will be notified, and it will be out there so everybody can see. So then at that time, we'll be able to freely discuss this matter. So I thank you for coming.
Thank you. Can we leave now?
Sure.
Does everybody?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. No problem, thank you. All right, item number three, A, consideration of electing a chair and vice chair for 2019. The commission may consider the appointment, reappointment of a chair and vice chair for the Planning and Zoning Commission for 2019.
Why? I'm okay with it.
See no reason to change it.
Nope.
Do you need to make them have a motion?
Yep, make a motion that everything is good.
I may, I make a motion that we leave things just as they are.
Okay. I second the motion.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Closed. All right, item B, pass/cancel action. We already took care of appointments and planning and zoning commissioners, or you're going to?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. That's just the appointments of the, of both yourself and Terry Shores, back on the commission for another three years. I just wanted to report that the council did take the action last week. And as you've already kind of discussed, the rezoning case regarding Mr. Procha's property on Slaughterhouse Canyon Road, that will be back before you at a public hearing on January 8th. The council felt that there was need for additional public comment, and so we will offer that opportunity on January.
We look forward to it.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Richard. All right, item number four, old business. Update regarding single-family residential design discussions. A meeting was held with certain local builders, planning and zoning staff, and two planning and zoning commissioners on December 5th, 2018, to discuss the issue of single-family residential designs in Kingman. The full commission will discuss the outcome of the meeting. Richard?
Thanks again. This is the, we've discussed this for a couple of months now, the issue of single-family residential designs. Last, it was talked about, as far as the full commission was concerned, back in October. So in summary, our zoning ordinance, section 26.300, the appearance criteria sets the standards for the appearance of single-family dwellings and accessory structures. This includes the minimum requirements for floor area, building widths, roof pitch, and requirements for garages and carports. However, the section does not address requirements for variations in floor plans, elevations, material choices, or floor schemes for single-family dwellings. So this is typical in Kingman, as well as other places. Developers have a tendency to use the same model, home plans, paint schemes, and landscape designs within their subdivisions for cost efficiency and mass production, and so you do get somewhat of the cookie cutter look in some places. So this is what we're trying to avoid our neighborhood's looking like, and this is what we would prefer they would appear with a variety of architectural styles, colors, paint schemes, materials, things like that. At the October meeting, this is just to refresh your memory, we did review, we approached it, three areas on the cities took a, addressed this matter. In Peoria, they adopted some design review standards applicable to subdivisions with a minimum number of lots. They require a minimum number of roof styles, materials, and colors based on the number of lots in the subdivision. No more than two adjacent lots can share the same standard plan in elevation in those types of subdivisions. Wickenburg has similar standards that are applied to lots that are less than 12,000 square feet. Eloy adopted architectural guidelines in subdivisions where standard plans instead of custom plans are to be built with some variation in guidelines depending on lot So at that last meeting, the commission directed that we have a meeting with some of the more active builders in Kingman to get some input on how best to address the issue. We held a meeting last Tuesday with Chair Fredrickson and Commissioner DeVries, myself and Sylvia Schaefer, and Keith Eaton with the city, and we had representatives from three local builders, including Angle Homes, HEH Development, and 44 Construction. We did invite additional developers, but we had three that showed up. So just to kind of summarize what the, the meeting itself, how it went, the builders described some of the challenges to varying the design of homes, including the issue of smaller lot sizes, especially those 5,000 to 6,000 square foot lots that kind of restrict your options as far as floor plans are concerned. They stated that the market tends to dictate the design and extra colors of the homes that will sell, and there's some other market segment challenges for lower-cost homes on smaller lots as well. They do, however, say that they recognize that customers don't like the cookie cutter approach, and they do try to vary the paint colors, textures, veneers from roofs of homes that are adjacent to each other, especially the ones that are adjacent to each other. Some other things that can be done to encourage variations in floor plans and designs would be, this would come really down to more of a subdivision design, and that would be having a variety of lot sizes and more curvilinear streets in subdivisions. They've talked about using a variety of pop-outs or architectural features for homes. This can be done, however, does increase the cost, which can impact the marketability of starter homes at smaller lots. There's also the, just the challenges of if we were to adopt new regulations, how we would enforce that, the issue of, you know, how do you determine whether or not houses next to each other will, will meet any ordinance or not, especially if they come in at different times, it might be a staff challenge. And finally, builders were asked to review the appearance criteria. They did not offer any suggested changes. They are fairly satisfied with the words as it's currently written. So the builders were, in the end, encouraged to vary the designs of their homes as much as possible, and we seem like we got a commitment from them to do that. So this is really just for your discussion as a whole, as the commission, and you may decide to either take no further action and just monitor the situation, you can ask us to bring back more information, more research, or we can arrange a additional meeting with the builders if we think one is warranted to discuss the issue further. And with that, I'll turn it over to you for discussion.
Let me start that?
Yes.
Okay, we did have a meeting, and I was very appreciative of the builders that did take the time out of a very busy day to sit down with us and go over our, the concerns that have been brought forth in, to the planning and zoning. And it was a little tense at first. I think that the builders were concerned that planning and zoning was going to sit back and try to tell them how to build homes, and I assured them that's not what we were trying to do at all, that what we were trying to do was protect our community from larger organizations coming in and putting up massive subdivisions, all exactly the same, and wanted them to review what we already have on the books, and does this fit the criteria that we're looking for in reference to variations in the homes. We get that they're doing that already. We appreciate that they're doing that already, but is it going to affect them or us as a community if we don't have stopgaps put in place? Basically, all of them said, "We're already doing it," and that they didn't see any need for change. So bringing that back to the table here was, that was the disheartening part. Again, we weren't trying to tell them how to build houses. What we were trying to do was get their professional input into, are we doing the right thing for our community, and should we be looking at different standards based on what other communities are doing? And without their input, I think we have to kind of start moving in a direction for ourselves in determining whether or not what we're doing for our community is the right thing. So again, I appreciated their time, but we're still back to square one.
I, I agree with everything, Lori. It was, I don't know, it was kind of disheartening. I don't think they really, they really were interested. They didn't even look over all the information we supplied to them, to even read it together. And I tried, I tried throwing out suggestions just from my own personal experience, and I'm like, I got jumped on and attacked on. I think unfortunately, maybe a couple of the builders there, they don't build a lot of homes in a row. I'm only aware of a couple builders that do that, where they're building 80 at a, you know, planned, 200 planned. I think that's, I think that's where we're running into a problem, because I'm already aware of, when you get over there, over between Keno and Gordon, a group of homes over there, you drive down the streets, they're just, they blend together like the picture up there, and I'm, I'm hoping that's not what we want here, but to go about, we were hoping to get input with them and suggestions, but it didn't happen. I, I know up there, I don't think number three, I don't think number three's, we're going to go anywhere if we want to pursue.
The thing is, is that the builders that were there, with the exception of Angle, and most of them only do a house at a time, and they put up one house, they'll buy a lot, and so you're getting, to them, they didn't see the need to participate. Angle Homes was there, and he is our biggest builder in the community, and his comment, and he's right, he already puts variation in his, the front of his homes, and that the market does dictate a lot of what they do is based on what's moving. But I think the point was missed or not received well was the fact that it wasn't about what they were doing, it was about what could be coming down the road and other people could be doing, which in the end could hurt them as local builders. But I'm not sure what we're doing either is the right thing, and I think that's where we have to sit down as a council, or as a zoning commission, and really look at where Kingman is going in the next five years to 10 years, and are we being good fiduciaries of what's going to happen to these subdivisions? And what's, you know, are we protecting our roads? Are we making sidewalks? Are we giving them green space? Are we developing a community to raise a family in? Or are we just putting up houses?
Well, I think one thing that comes to mind, and whenever the point in time happens when Rattlesnake Wash ever gets developed at some point in time, I think Sunbelt had, at one of the meetings, had said that they were looking...
one of the meetings had said that they were looking at building a thousand homes out there. So, I mean, you know, that's just a good indication what the potential can be. And, you know, things aren't gonna stay the same the way they are here, whether we see it now. If Kingman Crossing happens and all that area gets developed, we're gonna see probably more potential. And I guess instead of, instead of always reacting, I think maybe on something like this, maybe with the suggestion or the item up there, Peoria, Adon, and a couple other, maybe just looking at.
I think even just a simple wordage change in it that indicates that no two houses adjacent to each other can be the same plan. And I know they don't have a lot to choose from when they're building small homes on small lots. There's not a lot of floor plan choice. But I think there's a variation of at least three or four that they can rotate around and set up a little bit. And I think it's just a matter of verbiage. It's not changing what they're building, it's just changing where they're placing it in the subdivision.
Actually, the floor plan could be the same, you just wanna change the elevation.
Just change the overall appearance.
The look, the exterior.
Yeah. Well, I think you should move forward with it. Kingman needs to be proactive instead of reactive.
So would we like?
I have a question, and it's actually for Rich. Now, if a developer does come in and wants to build a thousand homes, and you're reviewing the site plan, at that point, that's when you would look at that site plan and determine if, you know, there is variation of homes, right? That would be like first step?
Typically, we review plans one at a time, and that's when the challenge is for if we were to look at trying to require some type of design or color scheme or something like that. I'm not sure how that would work exactly. Checking variations in floor plans might be a little easier than checking to see if they're using the same color schemes because we don't get colorized plans and that type of thing.
Okay.
So that's the challenge in our part, how we would handle that. I know in some of these, in some of these other cities, they do it on the front end, the subdivision is developed, is they have a approval for, say, four different, four plans or, you know, standard plans for that subdivision, and these are the color schemes that you're gonna use, and there's an agreement essentially at the time of development. And then it would be moving forward, it wouldn't be up to the staff to check all that, we would already be part of the agreement.
We already know.
Right, you would already know. It's harder to deal with though, if you're dealing with an existing subdivision that where they're filling in houses and you have different developers filling those areas in. I'm not sure how you would even address that.
Well, you're gonna get it automatically because you have this builder that has these three plans, and you have this builder that has these. So you're gonna get, I'm not worried about the fill-in, filling the gap part, I'm worried about new subdivisions coming in. And I just, again, it wasn't a matter of trying, we were just really trying to get their input on how you would word this and protect our community. And, but I think we need, I think as a, as a planning and zoning commission, we would be remiss not to visit this on a little bit tighter scale to determine the most efficient way to do it. Again, not telling them what to build, but maybe just saying, you have, you know, you have to have an option of four different plans going into a subdivision, and I need four or five different front elevation looks, and those two can be right next to each other.
So you would have to adopt some sort of general design standards, and then you would have to probably apply them at the time of?
Right. And it's not telling them, you have to put stone on this house or you have to do this because that's a cost that we don't want them to incur. But I think that we should be able to say, this is the standard, and, you know, keep it efficient.
I guess probably we're all in agreement on two?
Just rewording, yeah.
Two.
Yep.
If that's okay, Richard and Sylvia. Super one.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Richard. All right, new business. Well, item A, the applicant is withdrawing application. And item B, the applicant is withdrawing the application. So we have item C, zoning ordinance text amendment Z-018-0013, zoning ordinance text amendment 0Z18-0013. The city initiated a request for a text amendment to section twenty-six point three hundred, appearance criteria of the zoning ordinance of the city of Kingman to consider exempting metal buildings from meeting the three point five twelve roof pitch standard and allowing alternative roof materials. Sylvia?
All right, good evening. Got a little carried away with my PowerPoint, got a little bit of holiday going on, so apologize for that. So here we go. We did discuss this a little bit, but I'll go over, it's really short. So the city council recently approved ordinance number eighteen sixty-five on June fifth, 2018, which requires all accessory buildings to meet the development appearance criteria. This text amendment required property owners building accessory structures with metal buildings to stucco or use other acceptable exterior building materials as outlined in the development appearance criteria. The development appearance criteria also requires the roof of metal buildings to have a surface of wood shakes, wood shingles, custom metal that mimics another material, and a few others. The problem with this requirement is that the roof of the metal buildings is not typically engineered to allow for adding roof tiles and shingles. The other issue is that the development appearance criteria requires a roof pitch of three and a half to twelve, and accessory buildings constructed with metal buildings typically has a roof pitch of less. Planning and zoning division and the billing division doesn't object to exempting metal buildings from meeting the roof requirements of the development appearance criteria. Metal buildings will still need to meet the exterior materials requirement of the development appearance criteria. Discussion was presented by staff at the last meeting, and the commission voted to move forward with proposed text amendment. So staff recommends amending this section twenty-six point three two zero of the appearance criteria of the zoning ordinance to consider exempting metal buildings from meeting the three point five to twelve roof pitch standard and allowing alternative roof materials. The planning and zoning commission may ask staff to bring back more research, take no further action at this time, or make a motion to approve this text amendment. And I'm going the wrong way somehow. What's going on there? Well, do you have any questions? That's the end of the presentation.
No, but thank you for everything you've done on this, the whole, from the beginning to the end, and I won't even bring in all the in-betweens, but thank you, you've been patient with us the whole time.
Thank you also.
And with that, I'm gonna take a motion that we go ahead and approve the text amendment.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? Do a roll call vote?
Commissioner De Vries was yes?
Yep.
Chair Fredrickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Glass?
Yes.
And Commissioner McCoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Shores?
Yes.
Well, motion carries.
Thank you.
Unanimously.
Item number six, announcements by commission members, limited to announcements, availability or attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings, and requests for reports from staff. No discussion on any of these items. I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to thank Mr. Kellogg, Sylvia Schaefer, Richard Ruggles, and all our commission members up here. It's been an awesome year. I don't know where it went, but I thank you, and I loved working with everybody here and look forward to another year. And I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Merry Christmas. Well, thank you, Merry Christmas.
Anybody else, any comments? No. Need to have someone make a motion for adjournment, please? Oh, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, we just wanted to let you know that the RFPs for the revamp of the planning and zoning regs has been, they were issued this month. And so we have, Sylvia and I were busy today just answering some of the questions that came in to some of the folks that we sent the RFPs to. So we have a deadline of the fifteenth, fifteenth of January for the RFPs to be returned. So everything's rolling, and we will then know the real price of what this is gonna cost. So just wanted to update you.
It could be scary.
Well, the reason we did it is we did label the RFPs in such a way that they will not be, the RFP will not be, the contract would not be awarded until the start of the new budget because otherwise, we're not gonna know what to plug in for the budget, and that'll start in the next couple of months. Then we'll have a handle on, is it gonna be two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars, whatever? We suspect it's gonna be quite a price tag, so.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No further. I'll make a, need to have someone make a moment for adjournment.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.